All those in favor of these three nominations, the Chair, Vice Chair, and Clerk? All say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, unanimous? We reorganized, that was simple and painless.
No new paperwork to the Attorney General either.
What's that?
No new paperwork to the Registry.
There you go.
Trying to make your job easy.
Yeah, thank you.
Of course. Alright, so, the next thing on our agenda is the site plan review, 363 Bishop's Highway, map 104 lot 2. It's renovation of an existing building. Give us your name and go ahead.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Mark Taccio. I'm an attorney at DTM Law, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Longview Realty LLC. Longview is under contract to purchase the property at 363 Bishop's Highway from the congregation of the Sisters of Divine Providence. I'm sure many of you are familiar with the property. We are here before you this evening seeking site plan review under section 10.3 of the zoning bylaws of the town of Kingston, to convert three buildings which currently exist, and they were formerly used as a convent, an assisted living facility, and group housing. And we propose to convert those into an inpatient alcohol and drug treatment residential rehab facility. This is a permitted use under the R-80 zoning district where the property lies, and we have filed a special permit application with the zoning board, so we will be before them on September 17th, not too long from now. Throughout this planning process, we've had some pre-site plan application meetings. We met with the town planner and the former building commissioner back in about February as we developed the plans for this site, the site plan, and some of the other design components of the project. We additionally have met with both the fire chief and his staff, and the police chief and his staff, and we established a good working relationship, and we took their feedback, and we had discussions as to how to best tailor this site and this proposed project to some thoughts and feedback that we received from them. I'm here proud to introduce a comprehensive team that we've put together. We have ownership, who is Kayla Florence, and Eddie McGrath there, also associated with Rockland Recovery Group, which is the facility that would be operating the project. We have Scott Finara, who's with Grady Consulting, he's the project engineer team. We have Jill Peebles, who is from BKA Architects, they're one of the most renowned architecture firms in this industry space. Again, we're just here to walk through the site plan with you all, hear your comments and feedback, and go through the proposed site plan. With that, I would like to give Eddie McGrath an opportunity just to introduce himself, give you a few words about the story and the mission of the proposed project that will be proposed to be at this site. So, thank you very much, and if you have any questions for me afterwards, I'm here and I'm happy to answer those. Thank you.
How you doing? My name's Eddie McGrath. I'm one of the owners of Rockland Recovery Group, and also one of the partners in Longview Behavioral Health, which is the project that we had to speak about tonight. I personally have struggled with addiction throughout my teens and my twenties, and also alcoholism and drug addiction runs rampant throughout my family. So when I speak about this topic, I take it very serious. So when I'm doing this type of work, I take it very serious because I know personally that it's life or death. I finally got sober almost 13 years ago in 2012. When I was getting sober, not many people had hope in me, and to be honest with you, I didn't have much hope in myself. But what that did for me is that gave me a lot of passion about this. It gave me passion about helping people and helping others, and that's what recovery is really all about, is helping another drug addict or alcoholic. My first year of recovery, I got full custody of my son, who was three at the time. He's now 14. I'm now married with five kids. My wife is also in recovery. I opened my first sober house in 2017 in Rockland, Mass. And one of the main reasons for opening that house was I wanted to give guys in the South Shore where I'm from the same opportunity that I had. I got sober up in Wakefield, Mass. in the North Shore. So I married that house, I married that house in Rockland just after the same house that helped me get my life back together. In 2020, I partnered with my cousin Kayla Florence, who's more like a sister to me. We grew up in the same house, but we come from two totally different walks of life. Kayla went to Thea Academy, also went to Babson College where she pursued her MBA at Babson Grad School. What we do at Rockland Recovery is we're a day program, so basically clients come there during the day, and they do work on themselves. Because what it comes down to is we have to fix what's broken, which is inside of us. So they go through groups, they have a primary therapist, they meet with their therapist, and do one-on-ones. They're also, they also have a nurse practitioner where they will have any type of med management that they might need. We are a mission-driven business, so what I mean by that is we always put our clients, their families, and our team members first. The past two years, we've won Boston Business Journal's Best Places to Work. One of our core values is philanthropy. Giving back to our community is not optional, it's a priority. We have partnered up with Cardinal Cushion Centers, DEA for Kids, and Globe Santa as some of the organizations that you guys might know. We just celebrated five years in the business this past August, and we have awarded over 300 scholarships to our clients. And what a scholarship means is if somebody reaches out to our facility that doesn't have insurance or the financial means, we bring them in free of charge, no cost at all. At Longview Behavioral Health, if this project goes through, we plan to keep the same core values and the same mission as we do at Rockland Recovery Centers. When we first were in conversation with the Sisters, they wanted to know who we were and what we were about, because they wanted to make sure that our values aligned, and we respected that. We want to continue helping people, just like they have for so many years. Our goal is to be good neighbors and work with the community. I'm willing to answer any questions you guys might have. I don't claim to have all the answers, but one thing I will be is I'll always be honest with you. Thank you.
Would you stay up there in case someone has questions?
Absolutely.
Anybody have questions? No questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, good evening, Scott Finara with Grady Consulting. Won't be such a moving speech as that, I'm here to bore you. We were contracted to be involved with the site civil design of this project, and for this site, it's actually quite simple. We're not adding any buildings or anything, it's really just a new use of an existing site. I will walk through a few of the changes that we have done here. First of all, the site, it's serviced by private sewer, I mean private septic systems that'll remain the same. It's serviced by private wells that will remain the same. There is parking on site, but because of the use, the proposed use, we did have to add some additional parking area. So up here by building 1B, we're, this right here is an existing lawn area. We're just putting in two handicap spaces, and to mitigate that, we've designed a couple of rain gardens for that increase in purvis coverage. That's really a small area. There is some existing parking along this loop through there. There's some existing parking on many places of the site that's not clearly defined, you know, it's not striped, so pardon us here, we are going to fully define it, we're going to stripe it, we'll add some signs on the site too. Then down here behind building 1A, this is where the bulk of the work is as far as we're concerned. The existing parking is actually cut off about right there. So again, for the new use, we have to extend that parking to accommodate additional parking spaces. To mitigate that increase in purvis coverage, we've designed a double catch basin, so all the storm water will be overland flow to that catch basin. That'll go into the storm scepter, which the storm scepter is a great, a great structure for really removing the TSS. And then there's an existing basin to the south of that, and the basin is quite large, in fact, it's overdesigned for what the site uses, so we intend to just discharge directly into that. The benefit of this is that it's, there's existing vegetation, so, you know, most of the time with sites where we're adding a purvis coverage, we have to kind of dig out another hole, clear some trees, but for this site, we're really not touching that at all, which is, which is really great. We did receive some comments from the peer review engineer. We discussed it with Val, we agreed that the comments are reasonable, and we can address those as a condition. There are a few things I would like to point out. There's a regulation which limits the maximum slope for a driveway at 6%. There's an existing driveway here, that's about 14%, so we'd like the Board to allow us to continue to use that. So we're not adding any new driveway with that steep slope, we're just continuing to use that there. Another comment was there is parking in close proximity to the right of way, and again, that's up by this loop here. And it's parking that's used, just like I said, it wasn't clearly defined, so we would request that we allow to continue to use it. And all the new parking spaces that we've designed do fully meet that criteria. Let's see. One other comment was the maximum lawn area is limited to 10% on this site. We're already over that threshold, but we are not adding any additional lawn area. In fact, we're actually removing some by converting the lawn to parking, so again, we would like to be approved to continue to use that. Are we happy to answer any questions you have?
Bill?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and looking at this, I've drafted a report for you that you have in your packets, and I'll just kind of highlight that, you know, this is the Sisters' the old convent, as they mentioned. It was used for convalescent home and for assisted living for the convent, so this is a similar use, but because it was built as a grandfathered use, they need a special permit now to make it a for-profit entity. So they're going through the ZBA for that, and they're in a Zone 2. The R-80 zoning is the Zone 2 for the Trachopond Well, so they're subject to a water quality certificate for that small expansion of the parking lot. And you have in front of you the architectural rendering, so I didn't share them in your packets, they're like a folded eight and a half by 11 set, or 11 by 17 set. Because they're relatively minor, I didn't highlight them here other than they're doing some new awnings, some covered entrances, ADA compliant doors and things like that on the outside, and then some pretty extensive renovations to the interior to accommodate two different phases, 30 beds at a time, in each of the two buildings that they're going to renovate. So when we're going by it on the street, we won't see much of a difference other than some spruced-up landscaping, the striping, and I don't think you'll be able to see the new parking area from the street, really.
I don't think so.
So, the comments we received from other boards were that, of course, they're going to need to upgrade the onsite septic system. Fire is, has no concerns with the way that the parking lot is designed and has been for a long time. And police asked for them to add some fencing in a couple of spots, which they've done on this set of plans. We had an earlier set of plans that's been revised since, we're looking at the final set here. Conservation had no comment, and sewer, of course, had no comment. And our peer reviewers, PGP Engineering out of Marshfield, and what they did is they kind of went very carefully through the zoning, site plan review requirements, and the general bylaws, and just pointed out a couple of things that need to be added to the plans, but none of those come to a place where they would affect the site plan. So what we, what we did is say rather than try to add all of that and kind of overwhelm everybody over the holiday week, we would condition that if we were to approve this, we would approve that they are conditioned on making those changes to the plans, just so that all the information is current on the plans before they pull a building permit. We didn't notice any adverse impacts. The lighting is very minimal in terms of the parking lot design. There's, in that site plan packet, there's Lumen's Plan showing the lighting throughout the parking lot, and it's dim in comparison to like a shopping center, that kind of thing, so it's, it's, it's good dark sky compliant, big words tonight, lighting. So we're happy with that as well, because it's a relatively rural area, and it's a state road, so there's really no impacts to the road. It's designed to handle that kind of traffic. Not that it's significantly more traffic, it's a day program as mentioned. So the only other condition that I recommended was that we also say that they're required to get their special permit and their water quality certificate. With that, I turn it back to the Chair if there's any questions or comments. We think it's a good, as a, as staff, we think it's a great reuse of the site and a suitable location for this type of use.
Okay, thank you, Val. There must be questions. Somebody has to have questions. Anybody?
You said it was a day program, or is it a CSS program with residential? And it said there's room for, was there room that would eventually offer TSS services as well?
There's a property that I think is incorporated in here, known as the Visitation House currently for the Sisters of Divine Providence? That's incorporated into this as well?
Yes, yes, that is. I believe that is what is going to be the Formation House, and that is in this area of the property up here. And again, just existing building, no significant alterations.
Is there any planned use of that building, or is that just going to?
I think the submental indicated that it might be a sober living house in the future. Is that not the right word?
No, that's correct, and I believe that's part of the second phase, and that is proposed to be a sober living house, so slightly different from the rest of the property, but it'll be slightly different.
Okay, but not now. Later on, okay. Any other questions? How is operation? Like when does this start, during the day and then?
He can address more operational questions, so I'll turn it over to Eddie.
So there's going to be 24-hour staff there?
Okay.
24-hour nursing, a medical doctor, and there's going to, there's going to be a lot of staff 24 hours.
I think it's just the best spot in town for it. It's away from a lot of things, and it's just ideal. It's quiet, it's peaceful, it's a great place. I think it's, I think it's a perfect location. Any other questions?
It's beautiful, beautiful property to have people recover, and I applaud you on your journey.
Thank you.
I was just curious as to like what kind of, like how many staff, how many patients on a daily, like when they would be arriving, when they'd be leaving for the day, it says a day program, right? So just getting a feel for how the break will run.
Absolutely, so it's going to be combined once both phases are done. It will be about 60 beds. There'll also be a day program that there'll probably be about 20 clients that come there during the day. And what that looks like is for the clients that are staying there, that are in detox or residential, they will stay there for anywhere between like seven to 21 days.
Okay, so there is some people that are, there's not just a day program, it's a 24/7 operation?
Correct.
Some people are staying there, some people that's coming in during the day?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Well, when you said Phase 2, what was, what did that mean?
I think we'd probably benefit from, we have our architect here who is going to describe some of the build-out in more detail, if that would help answer your question.
I just heard you say something about that'll be in Phase 2, I didn't know what that meant.
Yeah.
Jill Peebles, BKA Architects. So when we say Phase 1 and Phase 2, we're just simply referring to construction phase. So the assisted living would be Phase 1, and as Valerie had mentioned, it's very simple turnover, it was as assisted living, it makes for a great reuse for this. Only big change there would be that the existing lower level that's currently empty, that would be the outpatient. So the outpatient on the lower level on the backside, it's going to have its own entrance, its own restrooms, it's really programmatically very separate from the residential portion. And then when we say Phase 2, we're referring to the convent portion. So once they're up and operational, we, it, we have completely separate delineation there, so we can add additional beds, and additional programmatic space in the convent.
So, and the report says 24 beds in the first renovation?
Correct, that's the assisted living.
36 beds in the second renovation.
I mean, how often in this business do you come across a site like this that's so perfect?
I'm never blessed with this kind of opportunity. This is, this is great. I mean, I was very excited when they reached out to me and walking around the space, I'm like, this is, this is perfect. Usually we're trying to cram in beds, or you're on a site that's loud and noisy and distracting, and this, to your point, it's so peaceful, and it was really, it's very geared to it, both the configuration and the site, it really is a great fit, so.
And there's no, no neighbors to argue with you?
Perfect.
Say, this is a terrible location?
That's the best of everything.
Which always happens.
I guess it does, we know very well.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions?
No, I just agree with the other members of the Board. I think it's a great location for these types of services. In previous life, I opened up a CSS program in Shrewsbury Independence Hall, and was kind of the same, kind of the same format as this project. You find an existing property, you don't have to do a lot of renovations, and you're able to help people. And it sounds like the program that you're trying to install in there offers a multifaceted approach to recovery, from everything from detox to eventual transitional housing. There's always a long waiting list after detox for people that are in recovery that they want to find someplace to go, they, something less, you know, not so permanent, but something that's transitional, and I think that this is great for the South Shore.
Excellent. Val, do you have any other comments? Val, you have a side?
No, no further comments.
I have a second question about the parking. So it says like 69 spaces, that's it for the whole site, or like, you've probably viewed all of this, I'm sure, and?
I think they're going from 54 to 75 spaces.
Yep, 75.
And that is more than what's required by the zoning for that type of use.
Yeah.
Now, are the people who are coming in to stay overnight, are they coming in cars? Are they coming? They don't need cars?
They will not be bringing their cars, no.
The people that come in during the day will be coming in cars? And will they have separate parking, like?
Some of them will be using their cars. Some of them will be getting transported.
Okay. And it'll be like staff parking as well?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe in a CSS, once you're checked in, you stay for the, you can check out at any time, but you typically are asked to stay there for the total duration of 21 days.
Correct.
So, there's not going to be, if there's inpatient, they're not going to be, you know, unless they leave the program, they're not going to be getting up and leaving. And then there's room for outpatient, so a lot of the parking more likely be used for staff and support services and other providers that may come in to visit and that sort of thing. But I'm, I'm just embellishing.
No, you're, you're absolutely correct.
Good job, Alex. Alright, well, what does the Board want to do? I think they're looking for approval, and?
There's waivers too, though, right?
There's waivers for sloping?
Yeah.
And, what was the second one?
So there's, there's the, the existing, pre-existing conditions, is the sloping and some of the parking and the road layout, which I ask that they don't change, because that would impact the site tremendously if we were to start tweaking those. And then I think there was a waiver of the lot, the percentage of coverage of the lot with the buildings?
Lawn, the lawn coverage?
Lawn coverage.
Lawn coverage, yeah.
Those are both pre-existing and aren't going to be altered or added to.
So those are the actual variances, right? The sloping and the lawn coverage? And existing, parking conditions?
Yeah, a couple of the parking spaces in the existing parking lot that front on Route 80 are, they encroach a little bit in the layout, but they've been like that for 30, 40 years and?
So, alright, so. And then we also have, so I'm going to write these down, sloping, lawn coverage, we have pre-existent parking, roadway, et cetera. Then we need also contingent on, those are the variances, going to be contingent on a special permit from the zoning board of appeals?
Yep.
And then it's going to be contingent on a water quality certificate. Does that cover it?
Yes.
Alright, so with that, we can entertain a motion.
And the comments too.
That's it, those are the?
That's already that?
Yep.
These are the, sloping, lawn, coverage, pre-existing parking, roadways.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the site plan view, the site plan at 363 Bishop Highway, map 104, lot 2, as presented with, 3?
These are the variances, yeah.
Three variants, 3, you know?
Variances, the variances, yes.
Three variants, is the sloping driveway is above the 6%, right? Lawn coverage is, is above, so we'll accept the way that is, and what's this last one?
Pre-existing parking, roadways.
Pre-existing parking on the road, and it's also contingent on special permit from the?
Zoning board of appeals.
And the water quality certificate.
Correct. That's the motion, good job.
And to revise, address the items in the PGP Engineering peer review.
Correct, to include the things, the comments on the peer review.
Correct.
Thank you for that.
I'll second both of those.
Okay, everybody understands the motion?
Yeah.
Variances, all the things?
Mm-hmm.
Conditions, and? Waivers, yes. Okay, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? It's 5-0.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
Good luck.
Good, that's good. Okay, moving on, we have meeting minutes. You'll see, it says approve March 10th, those have already been approved, and then the last one on the list is August 25th. Excuse me, those are not available. So we're looking at June 9th and June 1st, we have all the people we need to do those. July 1st, we had myself, Alex, and Jonathan on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 1st, 2025, as presented.
I second.
Okay, moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Aye.
Bobby, you abstain too?
No. Would it be appropriate for me to vote on that?
No.
Good, then I abstain.
Okay, there you go.
I abstain.
Yeah, you were enough out of the Board at that. Yeah, you were not part of the board at that time, so you were being voted.
I think you were, you were there though.
You were there.
Yeah.
Okay, and then now with the minutes of June ninth.
Um, make a motion to approve the minutes of June ninth, two thousand twenty-five as presented.
Okay, and I, look, I, I was there, David was there, Alex was there and Jonathan was there.
I'll second it.
Moved in second to, to, uh, approve as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Thank you, Bob. All right. Val?
So we have, uh, we received a filing for a, a special permit for conversion of some space above commercial on Old Orchard Road Lane. And because of town meeting, we're not going to hold that meeting for the public hearing until November tenth. So right now, we don't have anything in-house for October meetings. We would, I think we would normally want to miss the Monday night before town meeting, which is October twenty-eighth. So if we do meet, it would be that, that second Monday of the month, but right now, we don't have anything for that agenda.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that's about it for tonight then, huh?
Yeah, we, uh, we interviewed the building inspector candidates and we're hoping that, um, we'll have a, a new building commissioner soon.
That'll be good.
Yeah, that was a, a big move and, um,
We're, we're, we're expecting an update from, uh, we've always been getting updates, but not to be made public yet. But we're expecting an update from them all within a week.
Yeah.
Maybe two weeks at the most. And there should be some news there, um, and then, uh, we'll see where we can go from there.
Yeah.
And, um, the other thing is that, you know, like we, we mentioned before, the water moratorium has been lifted, that we mentioned in our last meeting. Um, so there's, there's people, um, that have things in the works and, uh, things are going to pick up.
Yeah, we, we, also, I wanted to mention that, um, the highway department, after we met with Main Street people, um, did a great job on Main Street in front of the churches and all the way down. They, um, instead of going and doing patchwork, they figured out that the cost was going to be similar to just repair. So they went in and just made a really nice repair all, all the way along, a big portion of Main Street, so.
I already walked it.
Yeah, good. So I just wanted to thank the highway department for working together with the community and with planning and, uh, just point out that they, they did that work last week and it looks really nice.
It does. It looks great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it looks wonderful.
The sidewalks are probably older than me. I only got repaired.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's been long overdue. And Grove Street's being paved.
Yep.
It's almost done. I think we'll maybe might have one more day. I think that's it.
Do the whole thing?
Uh, yes.
And Crescent Streets, uh, they finished that up. That's been really nice.
Crescent Street was a mess.
Yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's, that's done. And, um, and they did River Street.
Yeah.
Which is nice to see. Um, but Grove Street, they used that machine with the flames.
Yeah.
Whoa, that flamethrower is something else.
Unbelievable going by that thing.
Oh, you almost thought, you think your tires are going to melt on the way by. It's burning the grass on the side of the road. The flames shoot out of that grate. It's like they won't.
Did a nice job though, didn't it?
It really does a nice job.
I was talking to the guy.
Makes it stick.
Right, right at Foxworth, right, right at the entrance there. He said he saw, thought that jet planes were coming and landing on Grove Street.
Oh, that's fine. That, those things, those, those flames are no joke. Like a thousand torches under there. Oh!
We have a lot of power for that too.
And it, it just melts it, makes it, makes it good and sticky and it binds.
That's great.
Need that for my driveway. Yeah. Well, maybe, maybe they'll do yours next. Um, okay, I think that's it. Uh, but we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Val and Paula for coming to be in here. I know Paula really likes being out at night because she likes to see us.
I second the motion.
We have a motion. I'm sorry to be talking during the motion, but we have a motion and we have a second. To adjourn, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, that's unanimous as well. Pretty immediate, thank you.